Good evening, I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the Board of Education. And before we get started tonight, I just wanted to remind everybody that this meeting is recorded. It's also broadcast on the Internet and we're also supplying translation into Spanish. If you can just be considerate as far as using the microphones tonight, that would be greatly appreciated. Also, if you intend to make a comment, public comment on any of the agenda items, there are comment cards in the back of the room that you can fill out and there's a basket next to CJ that you can put those in with your name as well as the agenda item you will be speaking to. I'll report out for closed session. On motion of member Fuller seconded by member McLaughlin, the board agreed to the recommendation of the administrative hearing panel to expel student number 2015-2016-5 as presented by the following vote. Five, yes; zero, no's. Next, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance and Audrey, would you lead us? Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes this evening.
All right. Line number eight is approval of the minutes. Are there any questions regarding the minutes of the regular meeting of March 14th, 2016? Seeing none, I'll open it for public comment. I'll bring it back to the board. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Line number nine is correspondence.
Yes, this evening we received some correspondence from the Contra Costa County Office of Education. The district submitted its 2015-16 first interim report with a positive certification. This certification states that the district will meet its financial obligations for the current and subsequent two fiscal years. The office has completed its review of the interim report in compliance with all provisions of state law and based upon the information available, we agree with the district's certification for the period ended October 31st, 2015. We wish to express our appreciation to district staff for their cooperation during the review of this document and if our office can be of any further assistance, please contact.
Great, thank you. Moving on to line number 10, which is comment from student representative. As you can see Blake isn't with us today, he's busy studying tonight, so Rami is going to do the honors.
So, it's been awhile since I've been a student in high school, but bear with me. So at Los Santos, the highlights from the week are that the students and families of Los Santos raised a total of $2,307 for the Student Council Pennies for Patience Drive. Amazing job Bullpups. They're proud of our third graders for a great job on their Hero Wax Museum and Music Performance. Fifth graders enjoyed a hands-on brains assembly from the team at Samuel Merritt College last Thursday. Los Santos won second place in the Warriors Jamba Juice Healthy Bodies Pledge Challenge. Teachers will be doing a lottery in each class for the 100 students that will get to participate in a dance and smoothie party with some of the Warriors cheerleaders in April. And this Thursday, we have some very important visitors coming to Los Santos. Several schools and government representatives, several school and government representatives from our sister school in Benji, China are coming to officially meet our staff and students and to sign a sister school agreement. We're very excited to welcome them to Martinez. Upcoming events, fourth graders go west musical performance is this Thursday from 8:30 to 9:00. And Ms. Atchison's class is taking a field trip to UPS Distribution Center in Pinole on Thursday to see coding in action and to learn about the connection to that career pathway. John Muir, John Muir Student Council raised $200 on a, to support worthwhile causes for our local community. In addition, Student Council leaders have raised $400 in yearbook advertising, which will go towards yearbook scholarships for students. Fourth grade had an in-class field trip in which students had an opportunity to pan for gold and to experience the gold rush as they study California history. It was very exciting. No problem. I have to have more, I'm only on my second school, I'm sorry. I'm reading as fast as I can, Kevin. Okay. All right. Two John Muir students participated in the Future Chefs Competition hosted at John Muir. Congratulations to Lucy Fast Lemons, the John Muir student who got a hundred, first place in the competition. In addition to her prizes, Lucy won recess equipment and a ball rack for her school. It was a wonderful competition and all of the student chefs should be proud of their accomplishments. And it was a lot of fun, Diane and I were on the team, as was Bobby, that were judging the event. It was really very well done. We have an ELAC meeting coming up on the 31st of March and the auction, a luau, will be held on the 30th of April at the Shell Clubhouse. John Sweat successfully raised and hatched chickens, ducks and quail in our third grade classrooms. Little teeny glitch there, but no, no damage done. Wonderful PTA, school and district-supported cleanup day on campus with tons of work being done by everyone who was present. And they had a fantastic book fair last week. Career days are happening in kindergarten classrooms. The annual dinner dance is coming soon on April 16th and the recycle fashion show is on April 15th. Morello Park, one school, one book, family fun night. Together, we read the last chapter of the Lemonade War, voted on our favorite characters and shared our favorite parts with families and friends. The Eagle for Excellence Dinner Dance and Auction was a huge success. Staff and parents had a great time stepping back to the 80s and raising the money needed to continue with Morello Park programs. Student Council will be doing Crazy Sock Day on Wednesday. There's a school play called Snow Queen that'll also be on Wednesday. An open house will be at Morello Park Thursday night with food trucks for family dinner and a third grade music performance. Martinez Junior High, family math school continues to be a success with upwards of 30 students and tutors staying with their math teacher for an hour after school on Fridays to get extra help. Bullpupalooza, the improv and talent show, had three shows last week. It was great to see the students show off their creativity and self-confidence on stage. On Monday, psych council meeting and the boys' basketball awards night. Friday, California Junior Scholarship Federation, students will deliver their donations to the local homeless shelter. And on Saturday, they have campus cleanup to earn Bullpup Pride Points by showing motivation. I want you to say that one three times fast. Alhambra High School scheduling is underway and we're excited to see the various places. We have strong student interest. We're seeing a significant interest in many of our new pathway courses like public health. And for your information, we have these wonderful student-developed postcards, which outline the various pathways and the courses. And I'll put some in the back as well. This was designed and presented by our students. Next year, we will have a full WASC review and we look forward to the self-study process. As an initial part of that process, the staff has begun conversations around our school's vision and mission and student learning outcomes. This was a large portion of what the AHS staff looked at during our PD last Tuesday. Teachers were engaged in our discussion and appreciated the time to talk about these ideas. And as we look to the larger district mission goals and values, we look to refine our mission and vision into statements about who we are, how we serve our students and what our graduates should be able to do. Vicente Martinez and Brioni's Independent Study. Our U.S. History students took a field trip to Rosie the Riveter Museum in Richmond on Friday, the 25th. Students got to meet four riveters who worked during their, worked there during World War II. Students have been interviewing for a myriad of summer-paid internships. Many students have been selected by local businesses and organizations for these summer opportunities. And several Vicente students participated in Martinez City Cleanup Day last Saturday. Vicente will celebrate students who have had 90% or better attendance rate during the third quarter at a pizza party on Friday, April 1st. Vicente will be having a spring spirit week this week with special spring-themed days each day. And lastly, Martinez Adult School. Representatives from the Benji Bilingual Elementary School in China will be visiting on March 31st. At this time, the schedule includes a brief observation of the Growing Garden Preschool, a visit to Los Santos designated as a sister school for Benji, as well as Martinez Junior High and Alhambra High School. And that's it for a week.
Okay, great, thank you. Let's move on to number 11, Employee Organization Reports. 11.1 is Martinez Education Association.
It might not be on in the back. Hi, my name is Kathy Walsh and I am the chairperson of MEA's Political Action Committee. It is our intention to endorse candidates for the November 2016 school board election. We will be holding interviews in May. The Political Action Committee would like to invite anyone interested in seeking a seat on the school board to contact me by May 2nd in order to be part of our endorsement process. Our contact information is M-E-A-P-A-C-16@gmail.com. Thank you for your time.
Great, thank you. And line number 11.2 is California School Employees Association. Won't be making a report tonight. We'll move on to line 12, comments from PTA. Seeing none. Line 13 is staff board comments and reports. Are there any tonight? All right, we'll keep moving. Line 14 is public comments. Under Government Code Section 549-54.3, members of the public have the right to address the board on any matter within the board's jurisdiction. However, the board may not take action on any non-agenda item. Individual speakers will be allowed three minutes to address the board. 20 minutes have been allocated for this portion of the agenda. Additional time is allowed at the end of the meeting if there's not enough time to speak during public comments. Do we have anyone here? CJ, do we have any public comment cards?
No comment.
All right, anyone else that we missed? Okay, seeing none, we will keep moving and we won't return to that at the end of the meeting. Number 15 is the consent calendar and we have a couple of changes to that.
Yes, we have an amendment for 15.2 under resignation. I would like to add the names for resignation. Both names effective June 10th, 2016, Sarah Saferd and Olivia Couch.
With those amendments, are there any board questions? No, we'll open it up for public comment. Any public comments? Brenda, did you want to make a public comment on this one? Great.
I'm just concerned that we have so many special ed openings and a counselor opening and we've had such difficulty this year maintaining counseling services at John Sweat and John Muir consistently. And I've heard several advertisements actually lately by individual school districts looking for math, science and special ed teachers. And I'm hoping that in the LCAP, we'll have the forethought to include a goal to attract, hire and retain qualified teachers, highly qualified teachers, so that we can replace the staff that has resigned. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other public comments on this item? All right, we'll bring it back for the board. Any further discussion on this? All right, if we have a motion?
I move that we accept the consent calendar as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Items for board consideration, 16.1, appointment of principal at Morello Park Elementary. It's an action item and CJ, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. As a former principal of Morello Park Elementary, I'm very excited tonight because we have a candidate for the board to consider for this position. I'd like to begin first by thanking the individuals on our community interview panel for the time that they took to give up their day and be a part of our interview process. I think it modeled again that we have a very effective process in place. Deidre, thank you for taking your time to represent the board on that. And I'm very pleased because the candidate for your consideration is here with us tonight with some honored guests. Her name is Stacy Jocelyn. Stacy received her BA from San Jose State in liberal studies with a minor in speech communication. She also earned her multiple subject credential and master's degree from San Jose State. Through National University, Stacy has earned her administrative credential, including her Tier Two Clear credential. She has served as an elementary principal in Sunnyvale and most recently since 2007, has been an elementary principal in Brentwood Union School District nearby. I am extremely confident that the wealth of experience she brings to this district and to Morello Park will serve as an excellent foundation for her leadership skills. And I am very proud that we are recommending Stacy Jocelyn to the Board of Education for the principal, for the position of principal of Morello Park Elementary School. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Are there any board questions? You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna not do a question, I'm gonna do a comment. It was my pleasure to serve on the board with many of the people who are here in the room, who are also on the panel. I thank them for their time. It was a, it's always, and there's also staff from Morello Park who are here. I think I can, I will, I will extend my excitement, both as a board member and a part of this district, but also as a parent from Morello Park. Welcome to the Morello Park family. And I was honored to be a part of the process and I'm very excited. Are there any public comments on this? All right. Why don't, why don't we vote? Why don't we, why don't we bring it back and then, then we'll turn it over? So, yeah, all right. So, is there a motion or may I do it myself? All right. I would like to move to approve the appointment of the principal at Morello Park Elementary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carried. All right, now we'd like to say, oh, let's. And Stacy, if you'd like to introduce your family and say a few words, that would be great.
So, I am so excited to be here tonight. To my right, I have my husband, Scott Jocelyn, my daughter, who is 15 and a half, Gracie Anne Jocelyn, and my mom who came out. My dad is disabled, so he wasn't able to make it tonight. But my mom came out from Mountain View and this is my mom, Margaret Haynes. So, this is my family. And I am so honored to be here tonight and be standing in front of you as the new principal of Morello Park. I have followed your district for a long time. You have been a definite leader in the Common Core and you've been a wonderful resource to me as I have been principal at another school site. So, I am deeply honored to be here. I will work hard for you. I'm excited about this new journey. And what a great feeling to already meet members of my new team here tonight. So, thank you for selecting me. Thank you for giving me such a warm welcome. And I'm just looking forward to being on your team of true champions. So, thank you so much. CJ, thank you.
All right, any, anything further? What, I, do you want to say something CJ?
No, I just want to again extend my thanks to the committee. I know some of them are here today. I want to thank you for coming and the family. Thank you for joining us. I think you have school tomorrow, so you guys might need to head out. Please feel free to do so, but definitely welcome to the family, Martinez Unified.
All right. So, we're gonna move on to 16.2, which is the Master Facilities Plan. And this is for information and I'm gonna have Rami, you want to introduce that?
Set the context for tonight. I'm, we're gonna begin with just a quick PowerPoint about how we got to where we are today. It's been a long and I would say arduous journey. It's not quite finished, but we're getting really close. It has been an amazing learning experience. And when, when I was developing this particular, particular presentation, I thought long and hard about what to call it. And I mean, that may seem silly, but for some reason, I really struggled with, what words do I use to sort of convey where we are in this process? And I labeled it a work in progress because I hope that that's what it will always be. That will always reflect our best thinking in this moment, that we will continue to evolve and grow and that we won't allow ourselves to be mired at one point in time and then just freeze frame. Because schools are dynamic and if we're doing the job right, we'll always continue to change and grow. This plan reflects where we've come from, where we are today, and most importantly, where we hope to go. It is a roadmap for the future. And really, the, the driving force behind this, certainly this board, had the courage to create a plan that is really unique in very many ways. And I really want to turn this part of this presentation over to John Fuller because John was the driving force in really helping us to shape our new thinking. So Kevin, I have nothing to click with. Do I, will you just click for me? Can I, you want, does somebody want to give me something? Or, we could just pretend, there you are, we're at the next slide. Go ahead, John.
So, um, yeah, this has been a fascinating journey and adventure and. So, you know, going back in time, lessons learned from Measure K. A, it's hard to spend $45 million. I mean, you think it would be pretty easy and it's not. And, you know, it was only hard to spend it, but it was hard personally. And it took a toll, I think, on the board as a whole because it was sort of top-driven. We needed the money, we went out and got the money, but then it was sort of like, we started to realize that there was a lot of stuff that needed to be built or to be repaired. And we all bring a personal lens into this position. And it wasn't, I don't want to say it was personal agendas-driven, but it was insight-driven and there were so many needs that we just didn't have anything really to base it on. And at times, I think it felt personal, though I will always say that nobody in this, on this board has ever had ill will. But it, you know, it was hard. It was just hard to make the decision, it was hard to weigh the cost. And it was really hard to figure out what was needed first, what was needed. Set fast, in my discussion with Rami, you know, I, you know, it's like, this doesn't feel right, but we need to develop something. But to be honest, I didn't know what that something was. Because I remember Rami saying, what do you want? I go, I don't know. And I think this is where it became data-driven. It was almost bottom-up driven instead of top-down driven, which takes a lot of faith. And I, you know, I cannot say enough about my co-board members to be able to step back and say, we don't know what the final is gonna look like, but we're willing to at least start down the path. We started out with principals coming in, telling us what they needed. We brought in architects and constructions to bring their expertise. And we brought the public in and even though the public was pounding so hard on the board, we stuck to the path because we knew it was the right direction. And then, in all this, you had Common Core, we had the technology. We had all this different implementation into it. And I know as a board member, I couldn't keep track of which. And I know as a board member, I couldn't keep track of which ball was up in the air when. And to me, it was really exciting to have it data-driven, having bottoms-up, to have the input. I hope everybody did feel heard. The principals spent, you know, three or four nights with us. HY, I know you guys have done a ton of work, Bruce and John and Mike, you guys, I know, had a lot of input into this. And I don't think the final formation came till the very end. So, but to develop a plan, I think it makes it easier for board, it makes it easier for the district to make decisions as money comes available, because we don't know when money will come available, there's state money that might come available, might go out for bond. Sometimes, you know, we get a big chunk of money, and this will help make the decisions easier, I hope, for us in the future, not only for this board, but for future boards. So, going on to core values, this one, once again, a huge leap of faith, because we're board members, and we know a lot of people in the community, but we don't know all, you know, 15,000 to 20,000 people. And we went out and said, all right, what is the community looking from us as a board? What defines Martinez Unified School District? And, you know, it could have been anything, and I think these four elements really defined not only Martinez Unified School District, I think it has the board's core values, and I think the parents and the employees, our business partners. And now, it allows us to make more solid-based decisions going forward, education, communication, equity, safety, integrity, those are five key words. I think we gave it big enough definition, so there will always be the debate, which is important. We should be debating these five values at all times, and making sure they reflect what, who and what the community is. But it does allow us and future board members to come in and say, what is it to be on the Martinez Unified School District? What is it to be employee of the Martinez Unified School District? So, I'm hoping that, and this is what has come to focus, and I'll turn it over to Rami now.
So, the process had many steps, and part of it was really getting to know our schools. Sometimes that may seem silly, of course, we've walked our schools many times, but it was using a different lens to do that. And that's where the conversation around a facility condition index came to play. And, and while some people put a lot of focus on that, it was a tool of many that helped us look at our schools and to see where the line was in terms of how much it costs to actually maintain our facilities, and that's really what that, that number is intended to do. But it was based on that, and the many assessments, which began in the summer of 2014, we met with site and district administration. We established a facility steering committee that met, what, six times over that period of time, held stakeholder meetings, are called charrettes, and really looked at each site with a very specific lens about what the needs were from the site, from those that live at the site, those that really know deeply what that school is about. And then we established building priorities, and the priorities that we identified were we really needed to look at our aging facilities. Part of this conversation when we started didn't really acknowledge that, that that, that some of our schools have gotten, you know, and just in terms of their natural progression of age, that we're really having to look deeply at the ability and the cost involved in maintaining them in their present condition versus remodeling extensively versus really tear down and rebuild. We've also looked at growth. We, our demographic study really gave us a lens that said, we are growing as a district. While it may not be in leaps and bounds, it's, it's steady incremental growth, and being prepared for that growth rather than reactive, being proactive. We identified the educational program, educational specifications, and that's what John was referring to, and we talked about the needs from Common Core and career technical education. We keep talking about the 21st century classroom, and here we are 16 years into the 21st century, but it really is looking at those rectangular boxes that we developed way back when, and to seeing how effective are those shapes, and, and what are those classrooms' needs for today and for the future. We also, of course, are looking at school safety. It's an ever-growing concern for all of us in education. How do we keep our students and staff safe, and what does safety and security really look like in today's world? The issue of equity, perhaps parity is another way to look at that, and then traffic concerns. You know, when schools were initially built, I guess they didn't, I don't know how kids were supposed to get to school, they were airdropped, or, you know, there were, obviously it wasn't meant for busing, because there's no bus routes either, but I guess they were walking. And, and today, when you really look at schools, they're just ill-equipped for the volume of traffic that we have, and how do we do that without impacting the community? The data gathering that John referred to is gonna be the, the synthesis and the incorporation of all of these various plans. They could be just individual plans that sit on a shelf in a binder somewhere, but this is where I think the vision came. And how do we take all of those elements and blend them together into one coherent, cohesive plan? And they include our demographic study, the maintenance plan, and while the maintenance plan exists, we currently don't have the funding plan to match it. And that's where this whole conversation really comes to play. How do we address the needs of our aging facilities? We also did a furniture refresh study. That was something that people said, why are you doing that? Do you, are you, what are you gonna do if you don't have the funding mechanism behind it in order to be able to address it? Well, I don't want to stick my head in the sand. I, that may be true that we don't currently have, and is true, we don't currently have a funding stream that will say, here's how we're gonna have $4.5 million to replace every piece of furniture in all of our schools. But we identified what those needs are, what are most critical, and that'll help us going forward as we begin the process. We also have our technology integration plan. We were one of the first districts that developed a, a technology integration plan in 2010, and we use that, and that has been our guidepost for the future up to now, and will continue in the future. We looked at zero escaping, why? Why are we looking at drought-resistant planning? Because we're trying to be responsible citizens. We're trying to look at not only ways to have cost avoidance, but to effectively utilize our facilities in a way that make outdoor learning part of our, our total learning environment. And so, zero escaping is a responsible way to look forward in the future, and how do we, how do we best address our physical plants in a new way? The educational specifications, we talked not only about career technical education, but STEM and next-generation science standards. How do we begin to create environments that address all of those needs? And then, of course, as I mentioned, the facility condition index. So, this plan is meant to evolve and adapt and grow over time. It is a roadmap for the future, and it's a guide to help us in making future decisions. So, I'm gonna turn this over now to Jorge Rico and Marcus Hibser, and they're gonna take us through a process where we are in the master facility planning process in terms of our conceptual plans, and financially, you know, adapting a budget to tell us how to make those plans a reality. So, Jorge?
Thank you, Rami. I have been looking forward to this day for a long time. This is very exciting. This is when everything that we've been working on just starts to come together and gel, and is no longer reports, or numbers, or charts, or graphs, it's drawings with associated work and improvements and scope and costs, and it's, it's that very beginning of the roadmap. So. There we go. All right, thank you. Who has the, oh?
Okay, procedurally, what we're gonna do is one school at a time, and then we'll stop, have the discussion, ask for a public comment, board input, and then we'll move on to each school, one at a time.
Sure, sure. Okay, I am not, there we go. We'll just give you, I'll give you a very brief process overview, because Rami and John have really covered it in better detail than, than I can do. But what we will be doing is looking at the various, we'll start with elementary school master plans, move on to Martinez Junior High, and then Alhambra High School. And this is just reiterating what Rami mentioned, with, you know, starting with Alhambra High in 2014. One of the things I would like to point out is, is the value of the steering committee meetings, where we would all meet and discuss what, you know, we HY had done, and received comments, feedback, course corrections, that I think just improved what we were developing and creating. District core values, those do permeate all of our decisions, and I think John covered them very well.
Can I just throw in one thing? I'd just like to point out integrity on the bottom one, because I think that's one of the things that has struck me the most, being in every one of those meetings, that we operated in an open and honest manner to support courageous decision-making. There were many times where we took a big step back and said, this is what we thought, but then the collective group thinking shaped new thinking, and that would not have happened if people hadn't done that. And I think it's a real testament that these core values are not just a sign that's sitting on the back wall, but that we've really found a way to implement them in a way that is meaningful. So, I just wanted to share that piece.
Thank you. One of the things I would really like to focus on about the priorities is how the top three aging facilities, growth, and educational program really became the big drivers for all of our decisions, and, and really guided how, how campus master plans progressed, and why they changed, and how we got them to where, where they are today, and which you'll see in a short moment. And, you know, charrettes are really fun, but they also have a lot of value in that in this exam, this photograph, we had representatives from all the elementary schools here, and I think everyone picked up on what the other schools were doing, which really underscores the, the equity component, and gets everyone to understand where they are as a district, and, you know, why one school may be getting different kinds of work as opposed to another school. What I'd like to do is just really lay down the basis of what we were starting with for, what, what we started with for the elementary school master plans, and it's really growth. We're looking at 173 students by 2025. And when we looked at the number of classrooms, looked at the loading, and looked at that growth, we, we came up with an overall need of 81 classrooms. One of the things that we made a decision, just because we don't really know how growth is gonna go, but to look at each, each campus as equal to the others, and assign them 521 students. And what we get is 26 classrooms, and that includes, includes 23 standard and three kinders at each campus. And one of the different things that we have that doesn't necessarily exist right now at all campuses are, are rooms dedicated for music, science, computer lab, two special day classrooms, special ed. So, again, we're looking at, at equity. And before we, we do get into the other campuses, there's a couple things I'd like to talk about. I'm gonna talk about modernization and, you know, versus new construction, and I just want to point out, you know, modernization's a great thing, and it, it addresses needs. But I would like to point out that, at times, it does require continued maintenance, as opposed to a new classroom, which can put off maintenance for about 20, 25 years, which is what we've seen at Morello Park. Few other things, I'd like to just mention, there's, there was a lot of discussion of things that are like-to-haves, and there's needs. And we went, really just jointly went through all of those desires, the, I would like to have something, I really need something, and, and that'll start to show up when you look at the list of scope of work. And the last thing is that, you know, you need to look at these master plans as a menu, and not everything that we included is absolutely necessary. It's what you believe you need to really take your schools into the 21st century, and, and just, you know, address the needs of the students and the community. So, that said, I will start with John Muir. So, you know, this is just a brief synopsis of some of the major issues facing John Muir, and, and really, what, this, this campus is unique in that it's, it was built around circa 1950, and the infrastructure is just gone. We've had two water pipes break in the last year, the boiler, one of the boilers was replaced last year, and there's just constant maintenance problems and issues. The other thing is that you also have a campus built on a slight slope, and when it was designed, ADA did not exist, and you, you look at 50, 60 years of heaving ground, expansion, cracking concrete, and those non-ADA, that non-ADA compliance is exacerbated. So, this one, I actually really liked being asked to go back and sharpen our pencils and relook at more options. And I'll start with options one and two. Option one is, is just our, our basic modernization. You see red buildings that are new. This was really done to, kind of, the, the moving admin and kinder farther up to the north side of the site was done to, partly to help alleviate drop-off and pickup, and make that a smoother operation. This, this project includes modernization for all buildings. We were also asked to look, take that, and is there anything that we could replace as, as new, is, are there other improvements we could do to enhance the campus and eliminate some of the maintenance that's associated with modernization? And so, that's how we came up with option two, which is to take the original classrooms that are captured inside of a black dotted line, and look at replacing those with new classrooms, new stick-built classrooms. And I want to point out that in, in both options, one and two, we are looking at a complete replacement of all of your underground infrastructure. Option three actually started out as one of our initial options, which was looking at demolishing and replacing the campus in its entirety. And we were lucky enough to have the, capture some of the, the land that's currently occupied, well, actually, almost all of it, that's currently occupied by that park to the west of the campus, and use that for parking and drop-off. So, this particular screen, scheme has the highest capacity of parking and the longest queuing for drop-off. Part of what this scheme addressed also is, is keeping, well, keeping kindergarten next to admin, putting the NPR in a more central location, and orienting the classrooms so that there was more unobstructed and clear view of the grass playing field. So, this, this actually addressed a lot of issues that the current campus has. Option four is the same exact scheme, except that we looked at doing at the buildings as being modular, instead of, in option three, which, which are traditional stick-built buildings. So, that's how we came up with four different estimates for construction, four options. Option one, you know, as I said earlier, just think of this list as a menu. Some of these things, some of these items are standalone, and this is true for any of our, our lists. Some actually should be bundled with others, and I've, I've noted that on, on the right-hand side. But this is 29.1 million, which is very, very extensive for modernizing a campus. Options two, three, and four. Option two, for eight more million dollars, you can replace your original classrooms with stick-built classrooms. Option two, for eight more million dollars, you can replace your original classrooms with stick-built classrooms. So that's at 38 million. Option three, which is an all-new campus, I'd like to point out that options three and four are higher simply because there's so much grading and earthwork involved in those schemes. So option three is 61 million and option four being stick-built is less expensive at 54 million. I mean modular, sorry.
So on this particular campus, we're going to open it up for questions. So we'll do board questions, public comments, and then we'll keep moving that way. So are any board questions on this?
Yeah, I have a question regarding when we don't grade and slope, take care of the sloping. So how does that look in terms of the ADA accommodations? And we also were looking at line of sight issues as well for supervision of students and safety. So yeah, if you can just address that.
Yeah. So are you referencing not doing the extensive grading for the new campus options?
Right. I'm looking at the option one or two.
Well, option one or two, basically keep the campus slopes as is and basically just replaces the walkways. And I'd like to point out that part of replacing walkways is also driven by, if you're replacing all of that underground piping and stormlines, et cetera, you're going to be breaking up all your concrete. So you're going to have to replace it anyway. For option three, we could, I looked at doing significant grading just because of some just design issues and keeping classrooms all at the same level. But we can definitely look at stepping those classrooms, keep the hillside or the slope as it is. And you know, doing walkways on slopes, it's common and we do it all the time and that would probably bring the cost down.
Do you have an estimate of how much that might bring the cost down? Sorry.
You know, I would actually like to just sit down and do the math and the engineering and come up with a number. It would, it would definitely come down.
So one of the questions I have is we're replacing all the underground infrastructure.
Correct.
How bad are these classrooms getting beat up? Because don't we have to then like new pipes into the classrooms and, or does it not affect the classrooms itself?
What may be revealed when all the excavation happens is that some of the piping going into the classrooms needs to be updated. And I don't know if Mike could answer that better than I can.
Mike's like, well, what duct tape and bulb gum still okay, right? That's code.
But you know, typically when you're doing extensive modernization like this, you would reserve some money for that, those kind of unknowns, discovering those kinds of unknowns.
And then would we try to lay down the new concrete and the new grounds to make it more closer to ADA acceptable? Because since we're digging everything up or?
It would have to be fully compliant.
Okay. So we're taking, okay.
Yeah.
My question is when you, when you describe extensive modernization, what, what is that? Is that the full building envelope? Is that windows? Is it?
It's in this, in this case, it's actually taking off some of the roof. Well, the roofs from the original buildings happen to slope towards the clear story windows, which is not a good design. And it's just going to force it, you're just going to have to keep doing maintenance over and over. So in this case, it's actually peeling off the roof, re-sloping the framing and which gets very invasive. And it, and then also we're looking, when I, when we talk about extensive, we would also imagine that you'd be putting insulation in the walls and something classrooms in three of your four schools definitely need, your four of your elementaries. So there would be a lot of peeling off of finishes and it's, it's very invasive remodeling.
I know there's, I know the classrooms have a lot of windows there. So that's, are the replacing of windows built into that as well? Or is that something that we would get a potential surprise on?
We would like to test that out. This particular cost that we have for extensive modernization is about 70% of what you would pay for a new classroom. It's very extensive. And I would like it to cover windows.
Do you, in options one and two, I didn't, I don't notice a line item for temporary housing and would there not, would there need to be? Do I miss it? Maybe I missed it.
Let me go back and double check. I wouldn't, I would need temporary housing.
So is that the 4 million? You have it 4.4 million, 150,000, 500. So that, that's what you show in options three and four. I guess I missed that when I was looking through it. So we would need it for one and two as well, wouldn't we?
You would.
Yeah. Okay. Additional.
I would have to add.
That increases the cost, I'm assuming of the option one and two by 4.1. 4.15. So the, if I'm doing my math right, that would be 33 point, around 33.5 million for option one and another, so that'd be around 43 million for option two. I was trying to figure, make sure we're comparing. We've had, for those of you who didn't sit on the facilities committee, we've had this ongoing conversation about this, this particular site because of the really extensive needs for the, if we were to simply medium modernize this site, the potential for having to still rip up the floors because of ongoing leaks and those kinds of things, water coming up between the cracks, all of the existing stuff that could in fact make us close a school based on health and welfare or safety are, you need to think about that as we're doing it. So that's what I was trying to do is get us to look at the actual cost. And if it includes the 4.5 million dollars for temporary housing, then we're talking a lot closer in cost between one and the other, especially if we did a combination that included more stepping of the site, not just totally re-grading the site. Am I correct Jorge?
Yeah.
Yes. And I would like to point one thing out that in modernization, one of the things we strive for is to do that work in a classroom over the summer. So you don't have to have temporary housing. You would definitely need temporary housing for option two because you're, you're replacing the classrooms. I would have to go back and revisit option one and see if, just double check and see if we think we can do it in a summer or if it's going to require temporary housing. And one of the other things we often do is just break work up, break that kind of work up, heavy modernization over two different summers. Because it's faster to do a smaller amount of mod work than to do all of the classrooms.
So then to continue though, the option, we don't have an option that would be similar to option two, but with modular buildings, correct? You're looking at option two as being stick-built. How much would that change or can you, I know we're doing this as a very preliminary, just try to get an idea. But since this is our obviously most costly school, it would be helpful to know if we could do that modular on the existing.
We could certainly.
Option two have an option two A?
Yeah, absolutely. We can give you an option two A that's based on modular classroom replacement.
Jorge, is there a way to know if, just based on the initial discussion, not necessarily a dollar amount, that if that option two A is more cost-effective in terms of the, the design being modular or as we say, stick-built?
It would, it would, it would be less than stick-built. What, what, one of the reasons I want to point out why I chose stick-built as replacement is that your original classroom wings have a very unique footprint. And we would need to just contact some modular manufacturers and find out if, if that's an adaptable footprint for them.
So one of the things that I'm thinking about, you know, Kathy and I went to San Bruno and we looked at a modular that was a two-story. So as an example, if you were to replace two wings at John Muir and replace them with one modular, that's a two-wing construction, two-story construction, thank you, that, you know, just in terms of efficiency and overall utilization of space. You know, that, I think that's one of the things that we'd like to just explore. How do we, you know, most cost-effectively look at what we're trying to do and really be able to, you know, there's, there's a certain efficiency of scale that the modular and actually a two-story construction might, might bring. So I don't, I don't know what the ins and outs of that are, but I think it might be worth looking at.
Yeah, we.
Piggybacking on that before you answer it is if we were to consider a two-story modular, would that allow us to avoid some of the earth-moving grading situation?
Yes, because you're, you're, you're literally just disturbing half, half of the earth you need to disturb.
I think that's something to really give some consideration to because while I know that the grading piece is an integral part of the process, it's one of those things that you spend a lot of money on and at the end, who cares? I mean, you know, we still don't, you know, you're not, you're not going to actually see the value of that for students and their experience. So if there's a way to consider some of those things to mitigate some of those costs, I think that might, might be well worth looking at.
Yeah. One of the things I'd like to point out is, is there's a lot of wonderful stuff about two-story, but once you go two-story, ADA requires you to have an elevator, which is a large upfront cost and, and has that annual cost of maintenance.
Yeah, yeah.
Excuse me for jumping in. I just wanted to address that the two-story for just a second. It is less footprint, certainly. There is more cost because you have more circulation. You're going to have to have two sets of stairs and they have the elevator as Jorge just mentioned. But one of the other things to consider, a lot of schools end up with two-story schemes because they have limited amount of site. They have a three-acre parcel and they've got 700 students. And so, well, geez, we need the space. We need to go up two stories. A lot of school operators, the staff, the teachers, the principals would prefer to have a single-story scheme. It's a little more homey, especially elementary students, they're smaller. So the environment is very different with two-story versus single-story. So I just, before we settle on this as a dollar, dollar versus a dollar here versus there, I want to make sure we consider what the operational and the impact is and what the feeling of the campus is. I think it's an important consideration of thinking about the design of it.
I think one of the other things, I kind of agree about the two-story not being as homey. But the other piece is if you do modular, can't we do modular, like we might not have as many, as much housing cost, temporary housing cost, if you do one building and then do the next building and then the next building. Cause you'll still have three buildings that you can put the kids in, not to mention we had a couple that were sort of light modernization. I'm not, it's just there are so many possibilities with John Muir, I think beyond all of the things that we've talked about that we may need to continue this. But if we just look at the, the lowest cost to the most expensive piece, that's our range, basically. Is that correct? I mean, I think that's the best way to do that. But then it seems like the lowest range is actually about four and a half million more than is listed on this. Just because the whole purpose of this was really to look at what our needs were dollar-wise, to see if in fact we want to go out for a bond, what do we think, you know, it's not, we're not making any decisions about which option we're choosing tonight or even in the relatively near future, because we don't have any money to do any of these things right now. So, but I think it is important to continue to emphasize that modernization is not going to take care of a lot of our problems at this particular site. The way this site was built has some inherent issues that aren't going to go away with modernization. And some of them could in fact result, even after we spent 20 million dollars, we could still end up with some problems associated with the heating system, the heating in the pipes underneath. The things you noted at the very beginning, that could still create a huge problem for us. So we could have spent 20 million dollars and still end up with a health and safety issue because water's coming up from the floor and it could create mold and/or et cetera. Just something to be sure we all have. Bobby and I've lived with this conversation, but the rest of you haven't. And I think that's an important piece to look at.
Any other board questions? I'm going to open up to public comment. Any public comments on this one? Yeah.
I just, I'd just like to add that at John Muir, in less than a year time, Mike and his team has had to deal with four domestic water breaks. Last Thursday night, we had another one. So it is an ongoing issue and the question and the direction about the infrastructure really needs to be one of the key points about the John Muir site because it really is hurting and we need to be able to maintain. If we can't provide domestic water in the daytime, we have a huge issue about health and safety. We may even have to close the school on short notice. So I just want to make sure that that stays in front. I'm speaking for Mike and I.
Any other public comments? Do you have any?
Yeah, I want to second Bruce's comment that living, living at the school lately has been, you know, it's worrisome and you don't know what kind of surprise you're going to get and the impact, the possible impact on kids is always in our, in our mindset and a big concern. I also just want to point out when I'm looking at the options one and two versus three and four, and I know this was pointed out by Kathy or Bobby, that just the, the view in terms of safety in terms of the playfield is, continues to be a concern and it feels like we're kind of piecing things together that are really not ideal in terms of, you know, the quality of education and the quality of supervision. So I just, there are some real concerns with that, with the amount of millions of dollars that we're still spending on that. Just wanted to second those comments. Thank you for all this work.
All right. Let's keep moving on then.
John Swett. John Swett's a great campus. I just love the feel of it. And it, it also has the, I believe the least amount of modernization needs. One of the things I would like to point out is that we're doing an HVAC project this summer, giving them air conditioning as we are at Los Juntas. And what that tends to do is just bring down the FCIs for the building. So that impacted the level of modernization we looked at for those buildings. But I think the, the big issues at John Swett are the parking and drop-off is the, the parking and drop-off is, is just still a bit problematic. And the multipurpose building, which was the original multipurpose building when that campus was designed, was designed for a lot less students than you have now. So it's, it's very undersized by today's standards. There's, there's also one other issue I'd like to point out that, that the other campuses share. And that's that, and, and this is just because their admin buildings are older. But reception does not always very well control entry into campus. And so, and, and that was standard in, in the 50s and 60s. And unfortunately, it's, it's not anymore. So what, what we're proposing is, is really a very light modernization for the existing classrooms and replacing the NPR, taking, taking administration and really remodeling the inside. There, there are just some awkward spaces in there, a few things that could really be improved. And just another issue that affects all of the elementary schools is you, you really need to have dedicated offices with privacy for psychologist intervention, counseling. And that's actually something that we've, we've incorporated and mentioned in, in all of the administration buildings that we're, we're working on for elementaries. And as I said earlier, I believe at 18.8 million, our, our menu of projects, it's actually the, the second lowest.
But again, to emphasize this partly because we are spending how many millions of dollars this summer on the AC? I want to say it's like.
It's about eight or 900,000, but.
Yeah.
But you're also. But we're also putting on a new roof this summer too. School's getting a new roof.
Correct. There's two projects.
Yeah. So it's about 1.5 million total of the two projects this summer.
The one thing I see at John Swett, when I walk through John Swett, is the, the lack of insulation in classrooms. This would address the light modernization, would improve the insulation, because we're putting a lot of money into AC. If it's just going to go out the walls, because those walls are paper-thin.
We, we, this light modernization does not address insulation on the walls. And we can adjust that number to reflect insulation.
Would it address the windows?
Yes. Not in this light modernization. So that would bump, that would bump the number up.
So, yeah. And so in the light modernization, we're really not addressing either the insulation or the windows.
Correct.
All insulation or the windows. And we're not replacing the roof because we don't have to.
Correct.
A 1A, which would do the modernization with the insulation and the windows?
Absolutely. Yes, yes.
And that would be, would that be considered medium modernization?
I would have to go back and run some square footages. It might be between medium and excessive. I, I would just have to print some numbers.
Thank you.
Is changing the parking lot, are you just changing the painting or are you enlarging it? I don't see much difference between what's there.
No, we're actually, we, we did do some changes at, at the bottom.
Yeah.
There. But we're also taking, and I think it's different there, but we have two lane, in this scheme, we have all the traffic coming in near, near Gilbert Lane and going northward and then coming out. And two lanes that are, the, the drop-off lanes are actually, are going in the same direction. One of them's for drop-off, one's for, once you've picked up or dropped off your kid, you pull over and you, you drive out. So, and I believe we have longer, longer queuing.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Any more board questions on this one? I'll just open it up for public comment. Any public comment on John Swett? All right, let's bring it back and we'll move on to the next one.
Las Juntas. We, we approached Las Juntas very similar to John Muir in, in that, you know, there's, there's a number of issues there. Nothing as severe as, as just having to completely replace your underground utilities. But there is, there are some domestic water issues, some leaking. There, there are definitely maintenance challenges. And I, I think, well, because it's a flat site, so there is flooding. And, and one day that we were there, you know, we noticed that there was water in an old duct under the Kinder building. And I guess that happens when it, it rains and you start getting groundwater. But one of the big things about this campus also is just ADA compliance and that some of that asphalt is, it's dropping, it's heaving, it's cracking. And, you know, when I see little kids running around a playground with those cracks, I, I'm just worried about them, you know, tripping and falling. So there, there's a number of issues there. Also some wood that appears to, it just needs to be replaced, some of the wood on the roof and some of the fascia and trim. So what we started out with was really reorganizing the front of the school, moving, moving admin to the other side of the, the campus at the front, where you, you have Woodbridge right now, and taking that old admin footprint and putting four classrooms there. Also, replacing, replacing your multipurpose building, replacing admin to control the entry, putting admin next to Kinder, which was a site request. We, one of the things we did is we enlarged parking and drop-off, but we did it without really disturbing the photovoltaic shade structure you have right now. So we're taking something good and just working with it, working around it. And essentially what we were left with were 16 of, of the original classrooms. And so there was a suggestion to look at replacing those classrooms. If you're already doing this much work, why don't you just replace everything? And in, in this option, as in John Muir's option two, we're replacing them with stick, stick-built classrooms. And those two estimates are, just the modernization is 25.6 million. And, and with replacing the classroom, it, it adds another 6 million to it, 32 million dollars. One thing I would like to also point out is that Las Juntas, you know, part of why there's such a difference in cost is it's a, just it's a flat site. It's just easier to work there. There's no grading and, and there's not that extensive underground utility replacement that we see at John Muir.
Board questions?
Yeah, I guess I go back to my same comment about, could we also look at modular instead of stick-built? And see if it's actually even closer in terms of modernization versus replacement.
We will definitely do that.
Yeah. Go ahead, John.
Insulation, you threw it, it says, you know, is it included in this or do we need to add it also?
I would have to add it.
Yeah, option two would be there.
Well, in option two, when you get a new classroom, the code is going to require all the insulation in. But I, I, I will have to look at the, the original medium level of modernization and see if I included that.
Because you included it in the, on the campus issues that you put over here. You actually listed that. So I'm wondering if I might say that you were going to address it with the medium modernization? I don't know.
So, and then do we get rid of some classrooms here?
No, we added.
But isn't the kindergarten on the side when you walk up to the administration? I know we moved, but what did we do with that space?
Making that Woodbridge.
We, we, we made kindergarten drop-off. Because we, we needed three Kinders. And to put another Kinder in the same area, it was just very difficult and didn't work well in terms of circulation relationships and adjacencies.
I, I actually had a, I kind of had a concern about where Kinder is on this. Just generally, people like to walk their kindergartner in, more often walk them in. And here, we've got kind of just the looping area. And so I was just wondering, you know, why the main entrance, it seems like there might be some congestion around Kinder since now everybody's moving in towards the Kinder area. And then the majority of the classrooms are actually going to be on the other side of campus.
Yes, you know, we, we actually looked at a few different schemes where the multipurpose and admin was flipped. And admin was closer to the, the current classrooms. But there, there was a, a request from the site just to have Kinder and admin close to each other. I think we could look at how that roadway is laid out and see if we could come up with something else in front of Kinder that might alleviate everyone kind of focusing in that one single point of entry.
Because I, I mean, I think sometimes kinder parents tend to linger longer, right? And so, yeah, so for traffic, I just, I see if that's the major loop that potentially being a, a big problem.
Jorge? Yeah, that, and Marcus pointed out that that is really a kindergarten-only loop.
The loop part.
So the loop part at the, at the far end.
The loop, that's, that's the kindergarten-only loop?
But if you have the. So then, does that mean you have an entrance between two and five?
In, in this scheme, is there also the additional temporary housing that needs to be considered for some of these? When we consider the, the total price difference between the two options?
Yes. In this, yes, in option one, temporary housing is included and in option two also.
Does it say that?
There's, there's a footnote, an asterisk footnote under the, at the bottom of the cost estimate.
Oh, into construction. Got it.
Thank you.
Any other board questions? I'll open it up to public. Any public questions, Crystal?
Good evening. We had a really good time working together on this committee. Thank you for all the work and the back and forth with our, our community. We were looking at a lot of different options when it comes to the safety and security for this campus. Because it is on a Main Street, Pacheco Boulevard, there's a lot of concern about just how accessible our campus is to everything all around it. Wanting to look at the option two because the cost difference is not that much more. If we started with a whole new school, we would be able to actually move the campus back a little bit. So it's not so close. Maybe also being able to add security fencing and things to keep it a little less accessible to people that are just walking by. And also looking at parking and kindergarten. The reason that our committee, when we met, we talked a lot about admin and kindergarten being close together, because when kindergarten students have an issue and they have to go to the office, we don't want little tiny five-year-olds walking too far to get to the office when they're throwing up or needing help. So that was a reason why we thought that that was important as a committee. Another thing that we also were looking at was just the the infrastructure and the things that were important to us, line of sight and safety on the playground, having student restrooms close to the play area was also a really big deal. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? All right, let's move it back to the board. Are we done with that, Jonathan Lasontas? Then we'll keep moving on.
Okay. Morello Park. This is your newest campus, which is really just starting to see increasing maintenance needs at, at this point in time. There's a, a couple of other issues that I'd like to just highlight. And one is that the street feeding or serving that school is really a cul-de-sac. You don't drive by and go, go through and drive by. You go in, you turn around and come out. And we did a, a lot of evaluation and study about how that drop-off worked and came up with a, a very different scheme that, that we think will, will help immensely. The other piece is that, like, when we did the facilities analysis in 2015, I believe this school had the biggest enrollment, and I, I want to say something like 560 students. It, it, it had a very large enrollment. And it, it really shows up in, in, you know, it really made the multipurpose building look too small. And, you know, there's a couple of other space issues. There's, the, the stage of the multipurpose is actually used for something else. There, there's just really a need for a lot more square footage there. So and, and the last piece is that, you know, it is, it is fenced. But when you look at the fence protecting or surrounding Kinder, it's actually somewhat low and, and easily climbable. So what, what we, I, I think the biggest change you'll see here is, is really capturing a lot of land that belongs to the district that's across from the school on the other side of the current drop-off and using that just for parking. And just squeezing that traffic way into, you know, almost like a, a, a safety pin and having your, your two lanes coming in and out. And there's, and, and what we tried to do is just eliminate any commingling of parking with drop-off. So if you're in that drive aisle, you're, you're either picking up, dropping off and, or driving away, you're not looking for a place to park. The other major reconfiguration is taking administration and actually flipping that, doing some very significant remodeling so that administration now, the reception is closer to kindergarten. And as with other campuses, adding offices in there for, for psych counseling intervention. And then recapturing some of the space in the NPR that, that's, that right now is food service, which is way too small, giving you a larger food service and, and sharing that footprint with storage. And, and also I think CJ suggested making use of that thin space between admin and the NPR, which is just kind of a narrow canyon and actually using it as enclosed space. So there's, there's, there's been some much, this scheme I think has some much better utilization and addresses some space. and addresses some space needs this campus has. And just the last piece is, you know, our additional classrooms. The standard classrooms take the place where Woodbridge is right now. And Woodbridge moves over to after-school. And this work also does include temporary housing.
All right, are there any board questions regarding Morello Park?
Is most of the light modernization, I mean, is that going to expand the life of this building for another 20, 25 years?
I think... It's hard to say. I mean, there's been some maintenance, there's been some maintenance items identified that are slated for replacement out to 2025. One of the good things this campus has is those steel roofs, which are 50-year roofs. That's great. The walls, it's a new enough building that I would imagine that at the date this was approved, those walls are insulated, so energy should not be an issue. We're really just looking at a lot of finishes in our modernization.
And, yeah, great job on the parking. Too bad you didn't do it about, what, 15 years ago?
Any other board questions on this campus? Let's open it up for public comments. Yeah?
So, really quickly, I would just like to suggest that maybe we, if time allows, that we incorporate Stacy into taking a look at this plan. Sometimes, fresh eyes, fresh perspective, and her years of experience might provide some value to the plan.
Great, thanks. Any other public comments on Morello Park? Okay, we'll bring it back and we'll move on to the junior high.
Martinez Junior High. I love this campus. It's really well taken care of. You really, you really do have to look hard to find anything that really needs to be addressed. I think what really needs to happen is more spaces, more dedicated spaces. And I'll get to that in a moment. And really, the maintenance challenge is, when I was there, I did notice on the second floor of Building D, there were some stained ceiling tiles. And I'm not sure if that was just from the rooftop units leaking. But that was just the one thing that really jumped out at me. And so, you know, working with the principal, we came up with some modernization and actually some additions. And I think really, the big one is that the girls' locker room is undersized. And actually, those two gymnasiums, even though there are two gymnasiums and one is used as a cafeteria space, they're, they still need more square footage. And so, you really can't enlarge that girls' locker room. So, we, the option we suggested was to build outside in front of the gym, towards the theater, just a much larger locker room. And also, expand the boys' locker room so that you have parity and equality. And you take that, what would be the former girls' locker room and convert that to other uses. It could be storage, it could be any number of things. But it would actually alleviate some issues and problems and make, you know, improve flow. The other work is, you know, we continuously heard about how the music classroom is serving an increasing music student population, and it's really just very crowded. So, the option that was suggested is actually to, which solves a lot of problems, there's a domino effect, but to create a new, a new dedicated music classroom that's larger and actually take the old music classroom and divide it up into meeting rooms and counseling offices, which is something that this campus really needs. Then, we would remove Building C and replace it with a two-story, four-classroom wing. And this would, you know, be swapping out classrooms, but you're also getting an extra classroom that would then address potential future program needs. And then, the last pieces are fairly straightforward and simple. Giving the library more of a media technology identity, which is fairly simple, and doing some admin remodel that, again, is simple kind of work that can be done over the summer and, you know, doesn't require any kind of temporary housing and, you know, as well as combining F-101 and F-102. And, you know, those costs, I think this is the smallest. That would be $11.7 million total.
Any board questions on this campus? Any questions? Okay, I'll open it up to public comments. Any public comment on the junior high? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back and we'll move on to the high school.
Okay, the high school's very unique in that we've already started doing work there with a new Building K, which would, you know, provide immediate, address immediate needs for more classroom spaces for expanded curriculum. But, and that's really probably the biggest need. Beyond that, there are some, you know, maintenance challenges, not that many. Really, just the football field turf is at the end of its useful life. And swapping out a turf field is generally about $1 million. So, that is a big-ticket cost. But what we've done is to address needs that we had actually been discussing with Tom Dopey back in 2014. And really, I'll just start with the library in that, you know, that library can get very crowded at lunchtime. It has become a very well-used space. So, expanding that library would take the pressure off and just allow students to actually do what they need to do a little faster. If we're going to do that, where do we put the counseling offices? Well, we suggested that red building, that red rectangle with the number 12, those would be new counseling offices that are actually, you know, we feel they would be more utilized being adjacent to an outdoor lunch area and next to food service. It would encourage students to drop in more during lunchtime and just make it easier when things are more easily accessed, they certainly get used. There's a few things. There's some Building K, Building F work that we had started out with that had been funded by Measure K. There's also some Building H work that's also had originally been funded by Measure K. At this time, we don't know if that funding will be available under Measure K, but we want to keep that work on the list. It should not go away. Some of the other things that are, we also looked at is just improving the commons. That could be, that's a very large space that could be better utilized. So, there's a number of just small things going on at this campus. I think the new Building K is really alleviating the largest challenge and everything else will just, really just help make this run more smoothly.
Any more questions? No?
Actually, the gym in the dungeon, I mean, that, is there any? A, I think the gym does need more than, it needs some work on the walls around the side. They say it doesn't exist, existing no work. You're saying it doesn't need any modernization?
Well, the gym does need, it does need modernization. One of the things we identified, and I'll tell you, we really, in the case of the high school, we really just focused on what staff told us were the really big needs. And one of the things we did suggest is bringing daylight into that lower-level weight room. And that was a specific request. And I think that's doable. I found the original drawings, check the grades. You do have room to get some clear-story windows in there to bring sunlight into that lower basement level. It's going to be tough, but it is doable. And beyond that, that's really the work we identified for the gym.
All right. Okay, so that's...
We can go back and look at more if need be.
Yeah, because that's different than what I'm getting. And I worry about the supervision down in that whole area. You have the trainer's room, which is pretty isolated. That weight room's pretty isolated. And so, I've been hearing different things about, you know, the gym and that whole, the weight room and everything. That weight room's not even big enough to hold, I think, 30 students. So, not to have it on the radar, sort of is something different than what I've heard. And then, this is something I'm just going to throw back to the facilities as, it's not a nest, it would fall into that like. But there has been some discussion through the city of Martinez about wanting more artificial turfs. And I know it's been asked to me if the school district would be interested in exploring the upper level as a joint project. I'm not sure if you want to include it on the list or not, but it has been mentioned. And I was asked, so I only know where it falls in, in the grand scheme of things. But it was, it has been asked by the city.
The upper track?
So, because they're just realizing that they don't have the space to do the man. And they were saying like, could we do a joint project with Renton? And I was like, there's a whole liaison team to deal with this, so.
Okay.
But those... It could be anywhere. I think they're just looking for land. You know, there's just a, you know, they're starting to, the city's just has their own things going on. They just threw it out. And I was like, well, I don't know, I'm just one member, so.
I mean, that's definitely a possibility and we can find a way to include that.
But my main concern is just the gym and that weight room and the trainer room. I think we have been kind of lucky that we haven't had bigger issues in that area because there is a lack of supervision when you go down there. And it is a huge, there is a lot of movement with students in those areas.
Sure, yeah, we'll include that.
We mostly focused on the elementary schools as the ones that had not been touched. So, we didn't spend, I want to say, an inordinate amount of time on either of the secondaries primarily because of that. And because when we started looking at the elementaries, the cost exceeds, I think, almost exceeds our bonding capacity just for those. So, even, you know, depending on what you look at, not saying that those things aren't important, but we decided intentionally to focus our efforts.
I do think, though, it's a really good point to try to capture the ideas and get them on the plan because whether or not we choose to fund them or not, at least it's on the radar. And I think that, you know, if the idea of another all-weather field or if the idea of looking at, you know, you talked about the commons having a lot of potential in terms of underutilized space, and here we've identified some needs, there might be a way to, you know, to do that. And again, it may not be in this next iteration, it may even be beyond that. But it won't ever, I think it's just one of those things that you want to get written somewhere so that someone would have that as a record going forward.
Sure. Yeah.
All right, any other board questions on Alhambra? I'll open it up for public comments. Any public comment? Okay, we'll bring it back and we'll move on to next steps.
So, really, the next step is, next steps is, we're going to take all of this feedback, make our adjustments to the plans, adjust the costs. We'll take, you know, do our further investigation, like the gymnasium and the lower level of the gymnasium at the high school. So, we'll incorporate everything that you've brought up and resubmit those just to make sure that we captured everything. On a parallel track, the balance of the master plan, which, you know, includes writing and summaries and so on, ed specs, we will start finalizing that. But I think, I mean, this is really dependent on your schedule and availability. But we would imagine that we could give you a document for review at the end of April.
Audrey, I don't mean to butcher on that. Do you have a sense of where we are with the technology integration plan? I know that it's still a work in progress by the end of April. There you go. That's the last piece. The other parts we have to give to you.
We have all the other pieces. So, are there any other questions?
I do have a question about the next steps timeline. This seems awfully ambitious to come up with the associated costs by April the 6th and finalize it by April the 20th. I know we're in a hurry because of issues around bond, but I don't know that we have to finalize things. And the second thing is, we don't have another facilities steering committee meeting scheduled and as reluctant as I am to say, I want to attend another meeting. I think it would behoove us to actually come back together and take a look from, after we get all the board's input and take another look before it comes back. I know that's more work for you guys, but it feels like there's a, feels like a step in that process that might be helpful to have. I don't know. What about you, Bobby?
We're completely open. I mean, we need to work with what's comfortable for you and not rush things. So, we can have an offline discussion and readjust those dates, certainly.
All right, anything else further from the board?
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add, and I think Jorge has touched on it a bit, is that this is not a promise. This is a plan. You know, we need a plan just in case one of us sitting up here wins the lottery and decides to give it all to the school district. But it's not a promise. It's not something that we want the public to come back and say, but you said. This is a plan. Under ideal circumstances, we will do everything in the plan. Under our circumstances, we'll do everything that's possible, given our financial limitation. And I think that's important for everyone to know. Thank you.
Yeah, Bobby and Kathy, thank you for all the time. This is fantastic. I mean, do we get it all done in one swoop? No, but at least, I mean, just all this information, we can tackle different projects as money comes available. I mean, it's just, it's amazing. Yeah, we win the lottery. So...
For when the state comes back, the facilities money.
No, this is huge. So, thank you. And HY, thank you very much. And Rami and just, it's mind-blowing. Some of it good, some of it bad, but... just, it's mind blowing. Some of it good, some of it bad, but. So amazing.
Well, and and for me to follow up on that, what I found, what I may find interesting, more interesting as I really look into it is the steps that go together. I think that that kind of helps as far as conceptually trying to package things that
Yes.
that have to work together. So although it's a menu, it's kind of, it's, you have to do some things with other things.
Exactly.
I appreciate the detail in that. And if there's additional things that go together, we can add that as well.
Sure.
Okay, thanks. All right, so no other questions and we will bring this back.
We're, well, the plan calls to bring it back to the board on April twenty fifth. I, you know, we may adjust that accordingly, depending upon our ability to schedule another facility meeting. But, you know, we need to be within, you know, probably if not the twenty fifth and the first meeting in May. I I I think we've gotten the information we need from this presentation to help guide the next steps in the process. I just really want to say thank you. I mean, we have worked very hard. This has been a hard project, no question. A lot of back and forth, but just a real willingness to listen and to try to reflect who we are and what we need. There's a lot of ways to get to the end destination. There is no one path. And I really appreciate, you know, tonight we talked about, could we do this modular? Could we have a plan one A, one B? That's all, that's all great thinking and I really appreciate that we've been able to work together, think together, struggle a bit, but really come together with something that I think going forward will really make a difference. So I I really want to commend you for it. Thank you. Thank you both for your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to second that as somebody from the committee because every time we brought up something that meant that you had to go back and redo many, 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 many pages, but you did it. And you took our thoughts and everybody's thoughts and you helped us figure out as the whole group, not just Bobby and I as board members, but the entire group realized what we need might be different than what we want. And that you can ask for what you want, but you also need to be able to say, actually, that would be nice to have, but it's not necessary. This is something we really need. And I wanted to thank you, John, because that helped, all the the board focus goals really helped us keep that in the forefront. So every time we looked at these, we were looking at equity, we were looking at safety, we were looking at the educational needs of the kids. All of those things were at the forefront. And honestly, you know, it was tempting not to, we would be looking at something and say, oh, that looks really nice, let's do that. And then suddenly we'd go, no, wait a minute, that brings up a safety issue that we hadn't thought about. And by having that at the forefront of our minds all the time, I think that really made a difference. So thank you.
Great. Well, thank you so much. We look forward to seeing you next month. Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to sixteen point three, which is a bond update. As an information item, and I'll turn it over to Diane.
Thank you. Back on September twenty eighth, twenty fifteen board meeting, there was a presentation on what a public opinion survey would look like for Martinez residents and a timeline. So um we moved forward at the board's direction and there was an opinion poll survey in October. And on November ninth, Greg Isom of Isom Advisors came and showed us the results. So tonight, Greg is going to take another look and show us again the the survey results. And then take a look at how that affects a potential geo bond for Martinez Unified and answer questions. And then we could discuss if the board has any next steps. Greg?
Good evening. Good evening. Right, there we go. Okay. Greg Isom, excited to be here once again. So what I'll do is I'll recap the survey that was done late last year. Maybe answer some questions, kind of give you an idea of what else is going on in the state of California later on. But just to recap, so on page two, you have sixteen, about seventeen thousand voters in the district. The purpose of the survey was to contact four hundred registered voters that matched the demographics of certain voters that would show up to a certain election date. And the purpose of the survey was to ask them about projects, taxes, just the overall concept of a bond and just voter attitudes about the district. So four hundred were contacted, resulting in a margin of error of four point eight percent. You want to be five percent or below for it to be considered quite accurate. Okay? So at the beginning of the survey, we just wanted to give them some fluffy questions about education in California, what direction do you think it's moving? You can see that a lot of voters in Martinez thought that education California is going in the wrong direction. But then when we tied it down to, how would you rate actually the quality of education provided by Martinez Unified School District? You can see that voter said, wait a second, you're not California. We actually like you and we think you're doing a good job. Okay? So what we tend to focus on on that one there, it's not necessarily the good or the excellent, even though that's super, super important. But we want to know what the perception is of people that think you're doing a bad job. Okay? And only three percent of the voter survey think you guys are doing a bad job, which is extremely, extremely low. So that's kudos to the district. At the very end of the survey, on that third bullet point, we asked for statistical purposes. Can you tell us if you ever had kids or grandkids or had, you know, currently or have you ever? And so you can see that right around thirty three percent of the of the voters surveyed have absolutely zero connection whatsoever to the school district. Okay? On page four, this is not a popularity contest. This is just how we ask questions once again to determine, is there a certain perception within the district that something is wrong? Okay, so as I said, when we do these surveys all around the state, we always say, in the perfect world, if there are no issues within your district, it should follow this trend of teachers, principals, superintendent, board, district's job of managing its finances, which it did. You know, if there was some scandal going on, you would see some of these would be flip flopped and that's not what you want to see. So once again, what do we look at? We look at the green area the most to determine, is there a poor perception of of some type of aspect of the district? And the answer is no. Okay? So good news for the district. Now we want to just ask some other questions on on perception about, do you agree or disagree that good schools improve property values? Ninety three percent agree with that statement. Why is that important? Because I think a lot of people think that if you have good quality schools, that is going to drive up housing prices. Because if people are contemplating Martinez or West Contra or Martinez or John Swett, they want to go where the good schools are. Okay, so this is good for that voters recognize that good schools improve property values. A a question we want to ask also is because this level of state funding has been cut, local voters need to do more. The reason for this is because of Prop thirty, state bonds, there's all this kind of, you know, hubble up going around the state, sometimes in local papers. So we want to know, do you actually agree or disagree with that statement? And the fact that you're over eighty percent agree shows us that your voters think that there definitely is a need here. And so that's where, once again, we wanted you guys to be. So on page six, right out of the gates, we then hit them with the bond question. Said the district is looking to make classroom school facility improvements, considering placing a school improvement bond measure before voters in your commute and your commute on an upcoming ballot. Let me read you a proposed measure. Remember that one from September? Read them that yellow box, one hundred and five million is going to do all these projects. Would you vote yes or would you vote no? And we had sixty two point three percent of the voters said yes. We had right around, what is that, six, seven, eleven percent of your voters were undecided and twenty, twenty seven percent of your voters said no. The undecided voters were were asked a follow up question. Well, if you had to pick one way right now, would you be leaning yes or would you be leaning no? Of those eleven percent, four percent said, well, I'm actually leaning yes, two point three said leaning no, four point said, you know, I'm still undecided. Okay, remember for school bond measures for Prop thirty nine, you got to get fifty five percent, margin of error of four point eight percent. So as of right now, we'd say you were a victory or you were a winner, I should say, on election day. Okay? On page seven, what we wanted to do was ask them specific facility questions and bond projects. This was not the the order that it was asked. All the facility questions were actually randomized. But what we did was we actually prioritized from most popular to least popular on pages seven and eight. Okay? So first project that had the strongest support out of any of them, as you can see, over eighty percent. Construct career and technical education classrooms, including science labs, very, very strongly supported. Anything we see something over eighty percent, that's actually really unique. That tells you your community feels very, very strongly about this project. Okay? Questions two, or I should say projects two, three, four and five are almost always top five projects within the state when you're talking about bond programs regarding electrical assistance, plumbing systems, improve modern technology, repair, replace roofs. Then once again, you still are almost at the eighty percent with health and safety and then modernize slash renovate outdated classrooms, restroom and school facilities. That's right around, I'd say seventy six, seventy seven percent. Also something that's important, as you 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 notice, I I we look at the negative stuff. Okay, so while the positive stuff is really important, we want to look at the negative to determine, is there a project which your community says absolutely no to? And those are the projects that we typically will strike off the list. Okay? And as I said, those projects are when they're almost like, you know, below the sixty percent threshold. That tells you that that project is not strongly supported, but all these ones right here, your community really likes. Okay? On page eight, you can see construct rehabilitate elementary schools to address increased student enrollment, strongly supported. Ongoing upgrades, replacement of technology resources, strongly supported. You're going to see SSB. Let me jump you down to SSA on the very last project on the question. So half of the voters that were surveyed got SSA, the other half got SSB to determine, it's somewhat the same exact project, but you're just asking it a different way. And clearly, as you can see, SSB, people like SSB a lot more than SSA. So we'll never mention SSA ever again. Right in the middle, construct classrooms, restrooms and school facilities, very strongly supported, over seventy percent. And once again, school traffic drop off, upgrade or improve PE facilities, those are all winter projects. Your community clearly said that they really like these projects. And when you, when you mentioned utilize short term bonds for effective useful life of short term projects, and we're not going to touch that one. On page nine, we were going to ask them different tax rate questions and they were asked in this specific order. If you recall, we asked seventy dollars per one hundred thousand assessed valuation, even though you can't actually ask your voters to approve seventy dollars. But sometimes in surveys, the initial reaction of a voter is to immediately reject the very first number that they hear. And so we started with seventy because we want to actually have a a real answer to when we ask the tax rates that are actually legal. Okay, so even at the seventy dollar limit, which is illegal, and you couldn't even do it if you wanted to, you still had fifty two percent of the voters said that they'd be more likely. Okay? For anyone in the audience or anyone that wasn't here, remember where we says no difference bond, yes, no difference bond, no. That was meant for the voters to where, as I said, there were six percent of the voters said, you know, it doesn't make a difference to me. And doesn't make a difference to me can mean a whole different variety. It doesn't make a difference to me, yeah, sure, count me in. It doesn't make a difference to me, there's no way I'm supporting this. Okay? And so what we did was on the very final bond question, when we asked it again, any voter that said, yes, I support you with the bond, and they told us no difference on this question, that's how we got to that three percent no difference bond, yes. Okay? So when we got to the sixty dollar limit, which is the highest that you can ask voters to approve under Prop thirty nine, fifty six percent of the voters said more likely, while forty percent said less likely. Fifty dollar tax rate, just by dropping at ten dollars, gets you to sixty one percent more likely, four percent no difference bond, yes. So I mean, we added an additional, what is that, fifty six, sixty five, almost nine, nine percentage points just by dropping at ten dollars. When you go to forty five dollars, dramatically goes up from sixty one to sixty eight. For some reason, and a lot of surveys that we've done, there there's just something mental when you go below the fifty dollar number, you just dramatic increase in support. I don't get it. It's probably like, you know, nineteen ninety nine thing rather than saying twenty dollars. So tremendous support at the forty five dollar tax rate, still very strong support even at the fifty and sixty. So the purpose then, after we ask these tax rate questions, is we want to ask them the bond question again. And the reason for that is, the pre benchmark was to say, without having any information, how would you vote? Minus us just reading you this little paragraph. Okay? But then we pretty much told them, there's more projects that could possibly be done. And guess what? There's actual a cost to this through a tax rate. Okay, but even after hearing all that and the potential increase in tax rate, your support actually went up four percentage points, which is unique because it wasn't even undecideds that necessarily went over. You actually gained some noes who swung over probably to the lean no, undecided swung to lean yes, some lean yeses probably went to the yes. Okay, which tells us that the more information that you give the Martinez community, the stronger support that you're going to have. Okay? Questions about the survey? Right, jump into bond analysis and A D.
I do. What was the sample size?
Four hundred.
And what was the average age of the respondent?
Average age? I have that in the frequencies. I could probably pull it up while you're talking.
And were these all reached by telephone, landline?
All all by phone.
No, cell phone or landline?
Uh, both.
Thank you.
I'll get you, I'll get you the age. The the actual ages, just to let you know, matched the demographics of the of the age of the voters that vote in that specific election date. So it wasn't just skewed all eighteen to twenty four or sixty five and older. It matched the the actual ages, but I'll get you that exact number.
Sorry, last one. Were were these people who are, you know, more than than likely to vote?
Correct. These are all your high propensity voters.
Like last five elections or?
Uh, we actually take it to seven elections. And so you, we, I want to say it was about sixty six percent were were guaranteed June elections. They never miss a June election. And then the other thirty three percent, or I should say thirty five percent were voters who don't necessarily make a June, but they always make a November.
Thank you very much.
So bond analysis, assessed valuation. So let me get to this page. I think I have some scribble marks. So on page thirteen, this is the historical assessed valuation of the school district. You can see that in fifteen sixteen, the tax base actually went up by five point three three percent, which gives you your your total assessed evaluation of about five point seven billion dollars. Okay? On the right hand side in that box is the history of the district, going from nineteen eighty eight passing a bond, nineteen ninety five and in two thousand and ten. No remaining authorization, so there's no more bond money to sell. And the current fifteen sixteen tax rate for the district is fifty five dollars per one hundred thousand of assessed valuation. Okay? That second bullet point is 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 important because you'll hear this term bonding capacity. What bonding capacity means is it is a number that the state actually gives you, which says that you take your assessed valuation of five point seven billion, you multiply it by two and a half percent, which gives you your big number of one hundred forty three point six million dollars. So the state says you can put yourself into debt up to that amount right now. The state says you need to subtract out some of your outstanding principal debt that you have, which is the forty three point eight, which gives us your current bonding capacity of ninety nine point eight million dollars. So the state says, right now, if you had the bonding authority, meaning you passed a bond with that tax rate, you could put your community that today for a hundred million dollars. Okay, every single year, that ninety nine point eight million dollars is going to change. And so either one, you continuously pay off outstanding debt, outstanding principal, which is going to make the number go up. Or if your tax base goes up, you, that's also going to make your bonding capacity go up. If your tax base goes down just a little bit, but you're still paying off principal, it's probably going to be the same. The only time your bonding capacity is going to go down is if you have like another ten percentage point drop, maybe five percentage point drop. Okay? Which takes us to, well, how much can Martinez Unified actually access through a local bond measure? Okay? So on page fourteen here, this shows you, what what I took a look at was was the master plan. I think I took a look at at the minimum amount, which is right around one hundred and nineteen million, I want to say, if my analyst numbers were correct. I said, well, how do you get to that number in Martinez Unified with a sixty dollar tax rate, which is, that's the maximum that you can. Okay? So two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty, twenty three and twenty six, those were the, those were the sizes of the bonds that you would actually sell to get to a hundred and twenty million dollars. Okay? If you wanted more than a hundred and twenty million dollars, I I don't think you could probably access it. The the funny thing is, if you recall, you can ask for any bond amount that you want. Legally, Martinez Unified could ask for five hundred million dollars if you wanted to. You could ask your voters to approve five hundred million dollars. But odds are you probably want to win it because your voters would say, what are you doing? But two, you are limited because of the sixty dollar tax rate. And so with the sixty dollar tax rate, this is how much you can access within a right around a ten year period. Okay? This is assuming three and a half percent assessed valuation growth rate assumptions. This is assuming thirty year bond terms, which is right around the average of what California school districts ask their voters or when they, I should say, they sell their bonds. But and so what what are some of the the changes which could alter accessing this? If your tax base went down dramatically, it's going to push off your your bond sales. Because we're, we're assuming three and a half percent from here on out, zero percent next year to give us a little bit of a cushion, but for the most part, three and a half percent. Okay? These are all current interest bonds. None of those capital appreciation bonds that we heard about in the news, none of that. These are clean plain vanilla bonds, a hundred and twenty million dollars. Okay? You could say, I don't want to wait till twenty twenty six to get all my money. So what would it take to get our money sooner? Here are some alternative scenarios that school districts can choose. You said, you know, I don't want to wait till twenty twenty six. I want all my money within a six year period. How much can I access? Okay, with the same sixty dollar tax rate, you can access ninety eight million dollars. Okay? At a forty five dollar tax rate, you could say, we can, we can get right on seventy six million dollars and thirty dollars, you can see what that number is. Okay? The most important is that second bullet point that determines what your bond amount can be. So your bond amount is going to be determined, one, by whatever tax rate you select. Two, what are the assumptions that we put into it? You know, if I were to assume five percent over three and a half percent, that number is going to be a lot bigger, but there's no way your county would allow five percent. It depends on the spend down because, you know, generally the IRS is that you're supposed to spend whatever you sell within a three year period. So generally, that's why you see bond programs, you sell them every three years. It all depends on the management and how quickly you can get projects done, is school in session. It all depends on the management and how quickly you can get projects done, is school in session, how, you know, can you spend 35 million dollars, uh, in a three-year period? I'm sure these guys would say yes, but can you manage it, right? As, they do great work, I work with them in some other districts. Um, and so I, you know, when I talk about spend down and then interest rates, obviously if interest rates were to skyrocket. Uh, you're, you're not going to be able to get all your money within, within the same time period as well. So as I said, based on what the needs of the district are, based on what you as a school board want this final bond amount number to be. Is then how we kind of craft, whether it's going to look like a plan like this, whether it looks like a plan like that. You guys have the flexibility to kind of pick your preliminary plan going into the bond election. And the reason I always say preliminary, it's almost like it's a preliminary, preliminary plan, because every single year, this will change. And you're going to say, well, what do you mean? Well, if your tax base goes up 5% next year, you have different options. You can say, you know, I don't want to wait till 2023, can I, let's, we can shave off that extra year and get in 2022. You can say, you know what, maybe in your first bond sale, you actually need 40 million dollars to, to accomplish phase one. Okay, well, by making 40 million dollars, we may have to make, you know, phase two or, or the series B bond sale be a little bit less. And normally those, those decisions are made after the bond passes, when you're going through the master plan and determining certain projects that you actually want to accomplish. So what you typically do when you're going into the bond program is you say, you, you, you determine what actual amount you want to be. And then you craft a plan to look similar to this, based on what the final amount is. And then you guys have the option, say, yeah, this is kind of what I want it to look like right now. Knowing that every single year, you will be getting an update from me, showing you what your assessed valuation has done, where the current interest rates are and what the program looks like right now. Questions on AV, bond proceeds analysis examples? Pre-trick board? Okay, yep.
Let's just use John Muir, I mean, that's a huge nut. That, how do you finance something like that where it's over the limits you're, or the amounts you're giving us?
Well, that, that's, that's part of what I was saying is you as a board have the flexibility to determine how much you want your first sale to be. So let's say John Muir, I don't, I don't remember the number, 50 million dollars, let's just use 50 million dollars. You say, that is going to be our first project right out of the gate, that's all we want to focus on. You can make your first bond sale 50 million dollars, but if you're, this, this program right here, let's just use the $60 number of the 98 million, okay? So if you were to say, series A bond sale, 50 million dollars, can we still accomplish all 98 million by 2023? Probably not. So when you supercharge your program and you get more money upfront, what that typically will do is that's going to push your last bond sale out.
But if I can sort of piggyback on John's comment, we, what we're looking at, um, HY is not necessarily doing one school at a time. We're looking at doing combination of projects potentially, or part of John Muir and part of Los Juntas or something like that. So that we could look at, assuming we pass a bond, because that's really the first thing we have to decide. Is a bond and how much are we going to go out for before we get into? Are we going to be able to do this with, you know, the timeline? That's why I'm, I'm saying, I think our first focus is, what's, what's the amount that we need to do at least most of these in some way, shape or form? And I'm not saying I want to make a decision tonight, because I think the closer to June we make the decision, the better. But when I added up the projects and I used 54 million as the amount for John Muir, because I sort of took the least amount of the rebuild piece. And added 20 for John Swett, because we had some other things we were talking about, 32 for Los Juntas and 17 for Morello Park. Without either, either of the secondaries, it came to 123 million dollars, which is beyond our bonding capacity, according to this. But at least, um, if we went to the $60 per 100,000 of value, we'd get closer than we would with any other figure. And it looks like, if I'm reading your information correctly, Greg, it looks like we do have support for that amount. Maybe not the same level of support as we do for 50, but it's a, it's a fair amount of support for $60.
Yeah, I, I would agree, normally, uh, voter perception is that after you ask the tax rate questions and then you ask the final bond question, and again. Everyone assumes that you're going, you're asking for the higher amount. No one assumes you're asking for a $30 tax rate or 45, it is the $60. And, and I would also agree that in the survey, you know, we asked for 105 million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
And so I, I, I think that when, when you, when you as a board are making a decision, I, I wouldn't think that voters are too afraid of 105. I mean, when you get to 100 million, that's, it's, it's monopoly money for some. Eh, eh, I, I can't even comprehend it, right? And so the difference between, you know, 105 and 120 or 105 and 90, whatever decision you make. I, I, I don't think you're going to lose support over the bond amount. Eh, eh, it would probably be over the tax rate. Uh, that's what voters pay more attention to, is, is what is it actually going to cost me?
But if we're looking at a tax rate of $60 per 100, that's going to get us, what did we say, 100 million?
120, that, that would be your, your maximum, in my opinion.
I mean, I, I personally think we need to look at the higher amount, because when we're looking at the elementarys, we've got three of them that we're looking at with, you know, some significant needs. We're not talking about wanting to do something, we're talking about, schools are going to, um, really be a problem. I mean, if we look at John Muir just by itself, the potential for problems is obvious. We've seen how many again, that Bruce was saying, since the beginning of school, four? And that, I mean, that's just, and we're not even, we're still a few months out from the end of the year. So that's my, that, that's, I, I bottom lined it, that was all I was interested in hearing.
Why don't we, why don't we keep going to your timeline and then we'll open it up for, um, board questions?
Last page timeline, thank you. So, uh, where are we, what are the next steps that are necessary in order for a district to be ready? Okay, so we, we had originally back last year, conduct facilities needs analysis slash master plan. Ongoing, um, sounds like it'll be completed sometime in the next, you know, month or two. Uh, board meeting to approve exploring feasibility, that was done, conducted the survey complete, board meeting sort of results complete. Initiate public information program, speaking to some key people in town, that's ongoing. I think there's been some discussions with administration and some people, um, some decision makers. Finalize facilities needs analysis master plan, uh, I'd say complete, but after hearing tonight, as I said, it'll be another month or two. Um, finalize capital and financing plan based on community outreach. So what this means is, based on some of the feedback that we get from stakeholders in town. Based on what the final bond amount is going to be, based on if there's certain projects that user boards say, you know, there's no way we're doing this project. I, I don't foresee that necessarily occurring, but if there were some projects like that, that's when you, you, you craft what this final plan would look like. And that's when we say you're, you're finalizing your capital plan, I should say, your preliminary capital plan based on the community outreach. Um, assuming everything still continues to go well, uh, uh, probably in April or May, we would then start, uh, preparing the resolution for you guys if you wanted to vote on this. Once again, there is no commitment to doing a bond until you as a board actually vote on, adopt, you know, vote on this resolution call in the election. Uh, we have that occurring in June, um, and then probably in July, you would submit that to the county. The, the official deadline, I want to say, is like right around August 8th or so, it's 88 days before election day. Uh, we always recommend turning it a little bit early in case the county has some issues or they need something, uh, and you're not able to meet at the very end. Um, and then you'd prepare the argument in favor in August and you'd form your committee, uh, right around August and election day in November. Those, those are the next steps, uh, in regards to being ready from, from our vantage point.
All right, so this is probably a good time for board questions, so let's, uh, let's do, anyone want to start? No additional board questions?
So, no, I'm not going to let her, I'm not going to let Greg off easy. I think you're walking out of here. In the master plan, you know, it's pretty intensive, it's integrating a lot of parts. Do we put some kind of preliminary, preliminary plan on issuing of bonds or do we leave that open? What do we supplement this big, all this work with the financing part of it?
You know, it, every district is totally different in regards to, how do you implement it? Some would say, well, hey, what's taking a look at this bond sale program? You'd say, well, let's implement it into phase one or phase two. Some districts do that, some districts say, we don't 100% know what we want to do, let's get the bond passed. Um, then let's, let's kind of jump into a certain project and then, because as I said, a lot of the times, you may jump into it with a preliminary analysis. And then once you actually get into some of these walls and some of these other projects, you raise this going to be, you know, 25%, 50% more expensive than it was before, then your whole plan is shot.
And then, yeah.
There has never been a school district in my career that has ever followed this plan perfectly, because there's so many changes that come up. And so as I said, you, the most important thing to do is go in, have complete transparency, but also have the transparency, transparency to explain that, you know, while this is, we're basing this off of the knowledge that we have right now. And this sounds like a solid plan right now, based on what we have.
Then, um, what are we facing on the state level that might?
There are so many issues on the state ballot this year, from, I was just reading, you, you have Prop 30 extension.
Because it's all monopoly, right?
It's all, you're right, bullet trains and, no. Um, so you have statewide school facilities bond, Prop 30 extension, marijuana initiative, minimum wage, uh, increase initiative. Those are going to be, in my opinion, the four biggest proj, four biggest items that are going to bring people out. I'm predicting record turnout, um, I mean, who, we still don't know who's going to be the president. Uh, and that's, who, who knows who's going to be the president, it could be one of the scariest ballots of all time. Um, so, I mean, there, there's, there's going to be probably 15 pages. And, and, and I think that when it comes to school bond measures for school districts, generally November presidential elections have right around a 90% success rate statewide. Um, it's because there's just different voters that come out in, in November than versus June, who tend to be more friendly towards, you know, school measures and tax measures and whatnot. Um, so those are, those are the big things on the state level. I don't think that Prop 30, uh, is going to affect school districts' tax measures, bonds or parcel taxes. I don't think a statewide facilities bond is going to affect the outcome of school district bond measures or parcel taxes either. Because historically, they have not. Correct, 2000, 2006 was the last one, 2002 prior.
Any other questions? Is there a, is there a number short of 60 that you think we would pull well for?
Meaning?
Well, I mean, I know you gave us the breakdown for 45 and 60 and obviously 50 somewhere in the middle and, and you did that, but I, I will tell you right now, I mean, $60 on 100,000. I don't, I don't know what the average home is, but I mean, I can, I know a couple hundred dollars a year, in addition to everything else, is a lot for a lot of our families. And so, you know, being sensitive to that, I, I'm just wondering, I know we need the most money possible, but I also know that if we ask for too much and we don't get anything, then we're really in a pickle. So I'm just wondering if there's something else that you could help advise us what, what, what might help.
You, it's interesting, because looking at the different tax rates between, I have 45, 50 and 60. Um, because, you know, and, and anything, when you, when you get below 45 in the $30 tax rate, now you're talking half of what your master plan could be. And so we typically tend to, to base it off of what the survey says. And so, you know, $60 or $50, you know, for the average homeowner, if you were to go from 60 to 50, maybe it's, it's a difference of $30 a year. Maybe $40 a year for, for the average homeowner. Um, and so I, I, I think that's the decision that, that you guys probably need to make more than anything. Because from my vantage point, as I said, looking at the survey, to me, the tax rate is less of an issue than I've seen in other school districts. Because your support went up after we asked the question. Normally, the support level goes down, because people say, whoa, taxes? Hmm, I'm, I'm, you're going to lose some people. For, you know, what I would say your, to you guys, based on what the survey told me, was your community values projects more than saving a couple bucks. But, you know, are you, are you completely safe anywhere from, in my opinion, from, you know, 45 to 50? Yeah, you know, could you, is, is it going to be $59? I mean, as I said, it, it, the question is, every, every $10 difference in assessed valuation is a difference of $22 million for the district and for its facilities.
Every $10 is 22 million?
Well, I take a look, unless I just added my math, added up completely wrong. Oh, sorry, that's $45, I apologize. So a $15, a difference between a, a $45 tax rate and a $60 tax rate is 22 million dollars. So, you know, probably, you know, 18, anywhere from 15, 18 million for a $10 difference in tax rate. And that's, and that's based off of this plan, which is, I want my, all my money within a six-year period. And I mean, could you stretch it out? You know, if you were to do a $50 tax rate, but stretch it out for 10 years, because you said, you know, well, let's, let's ask for, for more and, and grow into it, rather than I need all my money right now. You know, maybe you'd be in the $90 million range. So, as I said, normally, how, how, when we come up with this final plan is, you tell me what the final bond amount is. And then, then, once I know what that number is, then I'll crack you different ideas.
And then the other question is, what would you, what would you ballpark a campaign like this would cost?
Oh, I don't think you're going to have to do much getting out the vote. I don't think you're going to have to do much phone banking or precinct blocking, because all these other initiatives are bringing everyone to the polls. So I think your campaign would be more informational, more making sure that your community is aware of why this is important, what they're getting for their money, rather than that. You know, because a lot of times you, you hear like horror stories of you're knocking on doors the weekend before, you have to get 50 volunteers. I don't think you need to do that, because as I said, Bernie or Hillary or Trump was doing that for you. Um, so if you get the right message out, so looking at a district, how many voters did I say that are in the district here? 17,000, probably ballpark, if you were to just do like a, a mail-only campaign, where you're just, you know, educating the community with mailers and, and some flyers and whatnot. Uh, anywhere from, I don't know, 20 to $30,000 if I had to guess.
Do you know how much we spent last time, Rami?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we spent almost nothing too, I don't even think we did a mass mailing.
It wasn't much.
No, it wasn't very much at all.
Yeah, I mean.
Meetings, yeah.
So it was, the information meetings were the thing that cost staff time.
Yeah, there's a difference between value of time versus value of sending stuff out. And so generally, the campaign committee makes the determination on what type of campaign they want to run. We've seen campaigns where literally they did nothing, zero mailers. We've seen campaigns where he said, we don't have enough money to raise for, to, to do mailers, but we can organize and get people to do phone banks, you know? So it depends on what you really want to do, but if you said, I want to send out, you know, three or four mail pieces, district-wide to almost all the homes, you know? An endorsement piece, a project piece, a VVM piece, you're, you're right around 20 to $30,000, just when it comes to the printer and, and, and the mailing and, and the cost of the postage.
So I have a, could you go back to the one with the four bonds? I just want to make sure I got it, so this is at $60 and we can do 120 million?
Mm-hmm.
And that's what we could go out with in November if we decide to go to full 60?
Yeah, assuming you're, you're okay waiting 10 years to get all your money. See, that final sale, would, you get $31 million in 2026.
Right, is this also counting for debt that's being eliminated while we're on the other ones?
Yeah, the new bond, a new bond with a new tax rate has no. Yeah, the new bond, a new bond with a new tax rate has no bearing on your outstanding debt. I think what you're referring to is the bond capacity number.
Right.
So your $99.8 million right now, every single year, you're paying off principal every single year. And so, probably by the time you get to 2026, your bonding capacity is going to be, you know, $130 million.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't think there's going to be an issue with the actual legal bonding capacity number. If there is, you as a school district, you always have the ability to ask the state for a waiver to take your bonding capacity from 2.5% to 2.6%. And so, the state says, you can do that as long as you don't issue cabs and you have a plan on what you're going to spend the money on. They've given 100% passes to any school or district that has asked for it, as long as you fit those two.
Any additional questions? Nope. Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comments. Anyone? All right, we're going to bring it back. So, I guess we.
Yeah, monopoly.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got some. We've got some, we've got some thinking to do. I think this is a good, it was a good partner to have these presentations tonight. We're obviously going to be coming back with the, with the full, all of the other items. I mean, there's, you know, there's furniture, there's other things that are going to cost money and that are going to be potentially on someone's wish list that we're going to need to incorporate into this decision. Let's see what the.
Yeah, I guess part of it is deciding how you want to decide. Because there's an amount, you know, obviously, and the piece that we talked about tonight is really about facilities. But as you mentioned, we don't have the money put aside for furniture. Where does technology refresh? I mean, there are other issues as well. So part of it is deciding, you know, what kind of process you would like to use now. You know, we coupled these things together very consciously. Greg was gracious enough on a very short notice to kind of pull it together. We really appreciate that, Greg, by the way. And, you know, we're, just as we're moving down the timeline, if you look at where it said finalize capital and financing plan and also the community outreach, we've done some community outreach and informational meetings, but I would not say, you know, really in a very intentional and deliberate way because we felt like we needed to have, you know, board direction to do that. So how do you, how do you envision that piece happening? Giving us direction and moving forward?
Well, I'm not quite sure how we do community outreach at this point other than as a, as board members reaching out to our community and seeing if there is support or if there's going to be opposition or concerns. I think, as much as I hate putting more meetings on a calendar, but this sounds like something that we need to consider having a discussion meeting about to really grapple because part of it is going to be the amount. But then, what goes on that amount? Because I assume there's, we're going to have to have some plan going forward as far as what are, what are we intending to spend this money on? And I'm not sure we can, I'm not sure we can decide that all in little bits as an agenda item. What do you guys think about that?
I, excuse me, fully agree. I mean, I've just done some quick arithmetic here. And the average home value in Martinez is between 505 and $524,000 according to various sources. And that's between $300, $314 extra assessment per year. You know, that's, that is a large ask for people. And the difference between 2010 and 2016 is that the ballot is going to be incredibly packed. That tends to result in what we call voter fatigue, not only with people being inundated with mailers and phone calls and people knocking on their door for all the various subjects that are going to be on the ballot, but just when they look at the actual ballot themselves. You know, we, we know that when there are too many things on the ballot, people tend to start voting no. And, you know, I understand the allure of not doing much campaigning, but actually doing some door knocking and attending community meetings and doing some, you know, real one-to-one voter outreaches, you get a much bigger bang for your buck than if you send out a mailer. If we engage in that type of a campaign, I can see this passing based on these poll numbers. There, these numbers to me, as a, someone who's done this for a living in the past, they look very good. And they're very attractive, but then you have to remember all the other variables that are at play here. And then, not to mention that actually, if you add up the total cost of all of these projects at their highest end, it's over $150 million. So there's a $30 million shortfall even with the highest end of the proceeds from this bond. How do we reconcile that internally? And how do we sell that to the community, saying, we're going to ask you for an extra 300 bucks a year, but it's not even going to cover everything we need, sorry? You know, but at the same time, touching back on, well, this is how we keep these property values increasing in Martinez, is keeping our schools top rate, folks. Because frankly, and I'm not trying to disparage anybody, the schools are a great, great factor in rising home values in this community, which ought to be an attractive fact to potential voters. So let's keep talking about it, not tonight.
I think, in my mind, we got to be careful, though. We can't get too specific because remember, this is a plan. So, you know, I don't think we want to get, I think, you know, there's two different thoughts. It's like, yeah, we need a budget for furniture, we need a budget for technology, and we need to keep the, for lack of a better word, the marketing area or what we're spending on in very broad, general terms. Because, you know, what you're spending in 2026 is going to be different than what, because this plan should be evolving, new ideas should be coming up, different needs. So as far as going through each list and saying, we're going to spend this and this and this, I'm not sure if we really want to get that detailed, but we want to just broad ballparks. Because, you know, learning from past mistakes, we pass that list and then we use that list sort of as, and things had changed, a lot of things had changed. You know, different studies, Vicente changed, high school changed, everything changed. So we want to be able to keep it broad. The other thing is, is yeah, we're going to be short, but, you know, you know, all this stuff was built with the baby boomers. And now, America's going to have to step up, not only in their schools, their roads, and bridges, and the whole infrastructure. It's time to step up for the millennials that are coming through here. And as much as everybody hates taxes, you know, one generation stood up and built this infrastructure. It's now time for everybody else to step up and start redoing them. It's just the way, the American way. We'll answer the call. So I say, we go as high as we can because I think we, what, we sort of, we were like capped out at 60 and we brought it back to 45 or something.
Now we wish we hadn't.
Yeah.
But at the time, we really didn't have nearly this much information. So the fact that, you know, more needs may be uncovered, things may change, I would certainly support going to the highest. And I would also support some, the language being something like what Greg put here in the survey because it is, in fact, broad. It was what the voters responded to. If I'm not mistaken, it covers everything that we talked about. Because we're not, you don't have to say furniture, you don't have to say some of these other, you don't have to be that specific. You've got to improve the quality of education. That pretty well covers a lot of stuff. So I think that the question is timing. When do we do this? And the other piece is, once we do that, just to remind everybody, then we have to stop talking about it here. Because that would be campaigning from here and you can't do that. So we need to, between now and whenever we vote to put this on the ballot, I think one of the primary things we need to do is if we think we're going to need $20,000 to $30,000 to do mailings or whatever, we need to get somebody to be a campaign committee because that was what we needed before and we had a lot of trouble getting. Which is why Rami and the road show were all over the place. Because if you do it as information, you can do that, but you can't really have this.
Refer back to the timeline that Greg has given us. He's talking about forming the campaign committee in August. And so, between now and when the board actually were, if you decide to do this, to approve the board, we can still begin doing some of that preliminary work and in, in reaching out to the, you know, the, the community leaders, if you will. And I don't know that we have, I mean, the preliminary conversation has really been so vague. There's been no mention of a specific amount or what the specific things would be for. Like when we approached Rotary as an example, did a series of presentations to them and sort of showing them the growth of the Martinez, ending with sort of the vision for the future. And in that, part of that presentation, we said, and one thing we're considering is, you know, another bond in order to carry us into the future. Did a similar thing with Kiwanis. So just trying to bring the information forward to folks is really where we are, but not with the kind of specifics that Greg said he'd help coach, you know, so that we would know what those talking points are and how that might work.
What I'm proposing is we start to identify people who might be willing to sit on a committee, not so much that we create the committee. But I think that was in, in 2010, that was a bit of an issue. And I think that that's probably the place where we want to start now, talking to people and saying, look, we're talking about a bond, are you, you know, would you be supportive? And are you interested in being a part of a committee to help support that? And see if we can't get that support going sooner? Because we really didn't get, we passed the bond with flying colors, but we didn't get the kind, we didn't get the committees structured.
Bobby, do you have thoughts on this? You have any comment? You have any comments? Yeah.
I agree that we need to go out for as much as we possibly can. We have a very supportive community. I think that, you know, if wishes were horses, yeah. I have a. We need to do this. I wish we didn't. I wish we could get away with not doing it. But we have to. We have to because maintenance is going to run up, just lead us to death if we don't handle some of the problems with our aging facilities. And I think that's the thing that I just keep coming back to is, what do you expect from a 50-year-old school that has people walking through it every day? And utilizing that facility 50 years running? And it's not going to be what we need it to be. So as much as I'd like to say, oh gee, thanks, guys, this is really, really great. And no, I can't ask the voters for any more money. I don't see any other options. The federal government isn't stepping up, the state government isn't stepping up. So unfortunately, our communities have to step up and I think we have to go for it. And I, I can only hope that the end result really demonstrates to the community the effort that's gone into it and the fact that we really hope to improve their property values and improve the quality of life for their kids. So I agree.
All right, so do, do we think that we have an, I mean, from what I'm hearing, it sounds like there's certainly some support for moving forward in this direction. I guess my question is based on the, the potential timeline that's presented. And I just want to kind of remind everyone that we try to take a month off in the summer. I'd like to try and do that again, so maybe we need to do front load a little bit. I do have some concerns, not only with the, the amount. I don't think we have to get completely specific as to projects, but I think we're going to need to not be so vague that we can explain to our constituents what it is, the plan is to do with a huge amount of money. I mean, if, even if it's just identifying elementary schools, modernization, at least really having that type of a direction. Because I think if we don't, we may lose some support there and some trust. So I would like to work on that a little bit.
Yeah, I think what would be best is when we get the final draft, is maybe schedule a special discussion meeting with the final draft. And then, we can do the dialogue and really, because then we got paper here and we can sort of start. I think that would be a great next step to build on top of what we discussed.
I agree. So that's, we're looking in an April meeting, most likely. And we'll probably put it, yeah, maybe the beginning of May, but I think sort of the sooner the better, at least from, from my perspective to look at it. And, you know, I, I do agree, we don't, we don't know exactly what things are going to cost in the future, but I just think we really, we can identify some things upfront that will help if we do go out to have a campaign with some tangible things that we can talk about and we can identify.
For what needs to be done, for what we have to pay to at least repair, let alone replace, it's going to cost more in 10 years than, you know, so the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. I think if we frame this in the right and smart way, it will be an easy ask to people. But like, the whole country is dealing with the, the, the negative impact of deferred maintenance. You know, drive across country, you'll see our crumbling highway infrastructure. It's the most obvious example. Bridges are collapsing, you know, just drive home, right? Tell me about it, I'm a cyclist. I mean, look, it, this, people love Martinez schools. It's, it's, it's a very generous community. I think that we can do this smart and we can do it right. And it won't have to cost $30,000 to run a campaign if it's done with volunteer effort, people-based. Perhaps if we do take some time and put our thinking caps on about people that we might consider or, you know, recruiting to be on, on a committee for this, I can think of at least a dozen people right now. That would be fantastic just in the downtown area. So, let's get this done, let's do it.
For public comment, I can't remember. No? I'm going to do it anyways, just to, the air on the side is safe way. We did? Okay. Was there anyone that wanted to talk on this from the public? Okay, so we've done it, even if we've done it twice. Okay, I'm going to bring it back. We're, since we don't really know what date we're looking for, for coming back for the master plan, we will tentatively make sure that we find a time that we can have a further discussion meeting to put all these pieces together. And we'll try and keep it on a Monday if possible. And if not, we will circulate it around. But I would say we need at least a couple hours, two and a half, three hours, something like that.
Curations was not wanting to rush them to, you know, put the last pieces together. Maybe to look, since the first meeting in May, I think is the 11th, maybe we try for like May 4th and add an additional meeting there to allow them the time that they need. And then, we would use that as a single discussion meeting item to really.
One of the things you could do is you can make April 25th a discussion meeting and then push business out to the next Monday.
I just don't know if they're, we were saying that we weren't sure if they were going to be ready by the 20th.
Yeah, so there's just several different options.
Okay.
Tentatively say hold the first Monday.
Okay. Yeah, so let's, let's tentatively try and see if we can keep that first.
Is it May 2nd? I'm sorry, I was doing without looking at a calendar, but yeah, whatever.
We'll make it 91 days of May.
I'm not free until after 3:00.
Yes.
On May 2nd.
So you said you're not available May 2nd?
After 3:00 PM, I would be.
All right, well, thank you. Have a good night. Okay. All right, so we're going to keep moving. We did run a little late. 17 is taken off because we don't need any additional public comments. And line 18 are comments from superintendent board members and future agenda items. And why don't we start at the end and move over? If anything, Jonathan?
Yeah, I know this got mentioned in the student representatives' report, but there were a number of students from Vicente Martinez that participated in the downtown cleanup over the weekend. And I'd like to thank them by name, Thomas Zimmerman, Matt Schaefer, Shelby Bolton, Carly Lennox, Taylor Parker, Josh George, and their amazing teacher, Lorena Castillo.
Couple of things I want to, I want to publicly thank. Paula from Sedexo had a wonderful time with the Junior Chef competition. It was, it was very nice. The kids were so enthusiastic, it was wonderful. And I'd also like to publicly acknowledge the fact that Lexi Tammany and Sam Gross are the Chamber of Commerce's Citizen of the Year as Educator of the Year. And I, when I think about the two of them, I think about the success of. And, and I, when I think about the two of them, I think about the success of, of our efforts to make Common Core very common in our schools. And the, the way they've made themselves available to every stu, every teacher and virtually every student in the district. You know, they're, they're teachers that need to be acknowledged and, and I'm very pleased to hear that.
Thank you, Kathy? John? All right, Rami?
I do, I have a couple. First of all, I'd like to extend an invitation to the board to join CJ, Diane and myself. We're going on a, on a, we're going on a field trip and it's to visit a, a new kind of modular construction. It's actually not modular, but it's, I don't remember what, what do they call? It's, it's an inspiration, it's called Folia and it's going to be at Central Middle School in San Carlos. And it's really done in a very unique way. It's sort of a new iteration of how you build a, a new, a new version of how schools are being built. Not stick-built, not modular, sort of a hybrid of both. And it's going to be at two o'clock in the afternoon, I believe is what they said. Yes, two o'clock in the afternoon, Central Middle School. And it's being done by block construction. So I just wanted to kind of put them, the date, I'm sorry, is April twentieth. April twentieth at two o'clock, we'll make a field trip out of it. And the other thing I just wanted to acknowledge was we, as a district, received a certificate of recognition from the California State Senate in recognition of our adoption and implementation of the California C S U system expository reading and writing course curriculum and the effort to bring that to our students in preparation, truly for students to not just be compliant, ready for college, but to be mindfully ready for college. And that's a real kudos to our teachers at Al Hambrich who have embraced this work. They participated. Also, they acknowledged our students in the Careers for Teaching Program as future teachers of tomorrow and what an important role that was playing in the development of our students to be prepared mindfully for college. So just wanted to, to acknowledge that they received this on March sixteenth, it's a nice acknowledgement.
Wow, that's great. Well, I, um, I wanted to thank Kevin for doing a great job tonight. Thank you for stepping in. And I also wanted to just extend my gratitude to cabinet and staff. I think, I feel like our meetings are, I mean, we're covering a lot of really dense stuff and they're, we're, we're clicking along and, and everybody has really spent a lot of time and work getting all of the information to us to be prepared for these meetings. So thank you so much. It definitely doesn't go unnoticed and I know if I can speak for my fellow board members, we really appreciate your continued support and professionalism. So, but I won't belabor this meeting any longer, it's one of our latest this year. So with that, I adjourn.